There's really no reason we wouldn't get started right away and Greg will just catch us in progress. So with that, we'll go ahead and convene the committee as a whole.
Good evening, council, council president, Teri Higashiama, community services administrator. Happy tax day to everybody. Here we are. I hope everybody got your...
Oh, wait, I gotta go do...
I thought I'd call it happy tax day, just because we have to keep it on the up and up. So tonight, we're going to have a presentation by King County Library System on the Cedar River Library, and they will be open for questions at the end of that. I do want to say to the audience, excuse me, that this PowerPoint will be downloaded on the city's webpage tomorrow on the library page. So we'll have it there for them to be able to view at home if they can't see it clearly on the monitor. So at this time, I would just like to introduce Bill Potasik from KCLS, the executive director, so he can lead us into the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Potasik.
Members of the council, it's good to be here. Would it be better for us to stand and present or sit and present? Do you have a preference, one way or the other?
No preference, whatever's the most comfortable for you.
Okay, well, actually, I will introduce and then sit down.
Okay.
Because you really want to be listening to architects and not to me. So just to remind you that this is the point where we have designed things to the point where we don't have all the specifics and things. And there's a schematic means that, you know, it's not all the way done. But it's done far enough along where you really get a sense of where we're at and, you know, if at the point we all agree that this is the general direction of the design, then ultimately, all things being equal, especially, you know, budgets and things like that and construction costs, that we should end up seeing something along the lines of what we're looking at at this point in time. So whenever that approval comes, then we'll be able to proceed and move along. So as you know, we're always anxious to keep the project moving forward. One of the things that really motivates us is that the cost of construction is going up now for sure, and so it is something that we're trying to deal with in some of our other projects. Anyway, just to set the stage, we have, we developed a design around the budget that we had, and we understand that there may be some flexibility, you'd be looking at some alternatives. But we took the design that fit the budget, that fit the site, that met the design standards that we were working with. We presented that to the community. It also has been discussed with folks in the meetings, the monthly meetings that you guys have had, that the city of Renton has had. So through all of those things, we have had a lot of comment, as you might imagine, and so what we feel that what we're presenting tonight has been really, in many ways, fired by and molded by all of the input that we've had throughout the process. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Ruth Balaico from Miller Hall Architects, and she's going to lead you through the discussion of the design, budget, and all the other issues around this project.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Nice to see you all again. Okay, is everything on?
Yeah.
Okay, super. So what we'd like to do this evening is run through a few things while we have all of you here. And first, what we'd like to do is recap on where we landed through the schematic design phase, and what Bill mentioned is true. We designed to the budget we were given and did all of our homework in terms of understanding what various kind of parameters we were up against on the project. Then I'll go through what we heard through the public process, and then I'll kind of show you, based on that feedback, what we are bringing to you tonight for your feedback. So there's kind of three pieces to this, so bear with me if some of the first part is review. I want to make sure that everyone has had all of the same information and we don't leave anyone out in the dark. And then we'll get to the public feedback that we got from the meetings and such, and then the outcomes. So, and feel free if you'd like to ask questions during. So to begin, when we finished the schematic design phase, which as Bill mentioned, it's just the first chunk of a design process where the basic intent is identified, but not necessarily every single condition detailed, but all the basic surprises are kind of ferreted out. And this rendering you're seeing here represents what we brought to the public meeting at the very end of March. And as you know, our public process has been ongoing since the fall. We have the reoccurring open house meetings held by the city. There was the city council retreat earlier in March, and then also the public meeting at the end of the month. And so there've been a number of forums where we've really gotten some great and lively feedback about the project that has helped inform where we are today. A number of the key items that we heard throughout the public process, there were some that really kind of stood out and were common themes. Number one, comments about the building size, comments about the proposed entry location. There were a lot of comments requesting natural light, windows, and obviously, that connection to the Cedar River is incredibly important. That's the, you know, the main spirit of this spot that you have here. Ensuring that this library would be here for future generations was mentioned quite a bit, and bringing the building up to current codes was also important. And the library has done a great job recording all of the comments that were given at the public meetings, but then also the comment cards that people can fill out and hand in. So they have a record, it's all on their website, and that's where we gleaned this kind of distilled down list from. So a little bit of background on the design that we submitted as the 100% schematic set. We did a lot of analysis and observation of the existing structure, and so what we'll do is give you kind of a recap on the state of the facility. We spent the fall having all of our engineers out there and putting together reports on the structure, and we did find that while the structure is, you know, for the most part intact, we are seeing areas of sediment and cracking. But they also did a structural analysis on what the building, what we would need to do to bring the building up to code. Because when it was built, it was perfectly up to code, but obviously, over 30 or 40 years, codes changed dramatically. And so in doing anything to this building, we need to bring the structure up to current seismic and lateral codes. You can see here, these are just some of the photos of the existing structure where we're starting to see cracking and differential sediment between some of the members and the envelope. The other thing we realized was that in a lot of places, the envelope is only a half an inch thick, and that we cannot leave as is. In order to bring the building up to current energy code, we need to replace the building envelope, and so it cannot stay, we cannot leave those infill panels as is. The other piece of the envelope that is not comprised of these half-inch-thick panels are masonry panels. And in our structural report, it was clearly stated that those are actually a seismic hazard. In an event of a seismic event, those masonry panels, they're kind of at the ends of the building, those actually move in a way that is different from the rest of the structure in a way that would be a hazard, and they, so those also need to be replaced. So knowing what we know about the structure, needing to bring that up to code, the state of the existing envelope definitely warrants bringing up to current energy code. The other thing we realized was that the existing, that thick roof form that you see is actually a cold attic. And we call it a cold attic because we aren't heating or cooling that space, but all of the duct work that is responsible for heating or cooling the library travels in that space. So what that means is, when it's hot outside, all of the air you are trying to deliver to the building that is cool and trying to get to the areas of the building and cool it, is actually being heated up along the way, so that the equipment in the building has to work even harder, and you have to use even more energy to deliver the appropriate temperature air to the building. Same thing happens in winter. That attic is cold, and so all of this nice hot air that we've spent money on to heat to the right temperature is cooling down all the way to get to the various delivery points. So what we need to do to not only provide appropriate temperature air and ventilation to the, throughout the building, but also really make big strides on the energy use is to start to make sure we're conditioning the area where duct work travels in. We know that the state of utilities coming into the building is one that needs repair. We just had a water main have to be replaced last week, which is no inexpensive event. So we've been looking at all of the utilities and a number of those, and the sewer line actually was another piece of infrastructure that the city emailed, and we've had both, the city line and the water line, we're both TV'd to understand what extent of repair was really necessary. The water main was an actual leak that occurred and had to be repaired immediately. The sewer line will be an upgrade that happens during the course of the project. The other issue with regard to utilities is, I'll go back to that photo here, the current gas line comes in, and in order to shut it off or turn it on, you know, in an emergency, when you want to go turn that gas line off, you actually have to go down under the building, which isn't really a safe situation that we would want to put staff or maintenance folks in the position of. So thinking about how these utility connections either need to be relocated for safety or just repaired because they're at the end of their lifetime. The mechanical system, we know, has reached the end of its expected lifetime. It's only functioning at about 80%, and because of the strain it's on, in terms of the cold attic and the other things we talked about, the inefficient envelope, we are really spending an extraordinary amount of money and fuel to heat and cool this building. So over the lifetime, not only is it not performing to the degree that it should, it is also not cost-effective. The electrical building is at capacity. We, there are no extra circuits or extra spaces on the panel left to plug anything in, which means no more computers, no more added technology, no more outlets for people to plug in their devices. So it's currently maxed out.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Ms. Taylor.
I forgot your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ruth Balaico with Miller Hall.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ruth. Sorry that I'm late, today is tax day. Got to do what you got to do.
Absolutely.
Just a quick question, are we going to get a copy of this presentation?
I believe that...
I'd like to.
It will be posted on the library's website in the morning, but then obviously, it can be made available to you as well.
Thank you.
So, and also Greg, the one thing we discussed at the beginning, I was going to do a little recap on where we've been to date, then spend a little bit of time on what we learned through the public process, and then how we're responding to that. So some of this first chunk may be review to some folks, but it was important to bring everyone up to speed. So we talked a little bit about the aspects of the building that need mandatory upgrades. They're not necessarily things we're excited about doing, but they are required and cannot be left as is. And fortunately, they have a bit of an impact on our budget. So what we do understand at this point is with all of the required upgrades, we know that upgrading the building envelope to current energy code, getting rid of those wall panels that are only half an inch thick, dealing with the non-conforming masonry panels, that would comprise 30% of our project budget. The required plumbing upgrades, right now, there are not enough toilets to meet current plumbing code, and so upgrading so that you're in compliance with plumbing code would be 4% of our budget. All of the mechanical and electrical upgrades, including a new sprinkler system, because that currently, it's not, it's not understood that it's functioning correctly, it's also a dry system, which isn't necessarily appropriate, and it doesn't meet current code. So in addition to the mechanical system, the electrical system, and a new sprinkler system. The seismic upgrades that we will talk about in a little bit more depth coming up comprise 23% of our project budget, which leaves us 19% of the project budget to do things like finishes, new partitions, to allocate staff space in a more efficient way, putting in a meeting room, all of the things that patrons touch and feel comprises 19%. The caveat to that is that this 19% does not include collection, does not include furniture, does not include technology, does not include shelving. So, you know, a big piece of this is actually coming out of a separate pot of money that is the library's and is not coming out of your project budget. So this, I think it's really important to understand that this 19% is a very minimal amount, and it's not doing everything. Okay, so we've talked a little bit about the building itself, we've talked a little bit about what that means to the project budget. The other big piece to this project that I think we've all embraced as a great challenge and opportunity is that the permitting process for this project over the river is fairly complex. And it's both the beautiful part of this project that you're over this river, but it's also the challenge, and there are definitely a number of more complex jurisdictional hoops because of the nature of the site. So I'll walk you through what we know to date about that as well. There are a number of best practices and permitting pieces because of the river, and obviously, it's in our interest and our belief that we want to leave the site in the same or better condition as it is now, and there are a number of agencies that help us oversee that. And that will be everything from their review of our drawings going forward. They will potentially ask for mitigation measures for the project that we're putting together. But at the same time, there will be a lot more oversight inspection and mandatory practices during construction to keep debris out of the river. And so all of these things are really in place to make sure that this river, which is the big deal on this site, really is kept in good condition because we have water quality issues, we have salmon spawning, so that's a big piece of what the team has been working toward. So when we start talking about oversight for overwater projects, there are a couple of very important datums that are universal. They are, they are determined by surveyors and are kind of universal throughout, throughout the area and across the United States, and they're used as kind of benchmarks. So you can see here, this is a diagrammatic section of the library straddling the river basin, and you can see that the floor level is kind of even with grayed in that dark gray shaded area. There are two red dotted lines below that. The first one is the base flood elevation, and the second one is the ordinary high watermark. And both of those are identified as very important benchmarks throughout various permitting documents, and our goal would be to keep all of the construction work outside or landward of those datums. The minute that we start doing work below those work points in the floodplain area, we start to trigger more owners oversight and more agencies start to get involved with the permitting. And so it becomes, not only do we open ourselves up to much longer permitting durations where you can be appealed and it can really get bogged down, you also start to incur more costly practices because you are affecting water flow, you're affecting water quality, you're affecting shoreline habitat, and you're affecting the salmon activity. So one of the very first things our engineering team did was a real game changer for this project, and I think kept this project out of years of permitting. And what we realized was that, we knew that the structure had to be seismically upgraded. There's a lot of ways we can do that, and some of the first ideas were actually to start to increase the girth of the columns that go into the river. But in doing that, we start to affect water flow and start displacing water volume and start triggering oversight by other agencies. And so the real game changer here was when our geotechnical team and structural team realized that by putting in abutments on either side of the building, that's the white element you see on each side, we could brace the building and be landward of all of these two datums that are important. So basically, we're putting in concrete piles on both sides of the building, capping the piles with a concrete cap, burying that. It'll be a few feet below, you know, the top of the cell, so you'll never see them. But these things do two things. They buttress the concrete structure so that in a seismic event, it has the rigidity it needs. Second of all, because we're in a river area, all of the soils are considered alluvial, which means they're prone to liquefaction. And all of our soil analysis has said that the probability of liquefaction in a seismic event is moderate to high. So the other thing we need to do, in addition to bracing the structure, is also to hold back this soil that will turn into quicksand essentially in the event of an earthquake. So these things also start to kind of act like buttresses in keeping the soil from flowing down and starting to compromise the existing structure in the river. So this was kind of, I think, a huge turning point for the project because not only did we solve the seismic piece, but we eliminated a lot of permitting difficulties. So, that being said, here's where we are in the process. We are in the very first light blue piece that says schematic design, and currently we are on hold for waiting for outcomes from city council and also for the submittal of our land use and environmental permits. And you can see that this is just kind of the first chunk of the project. We still have design development, which is the next phase, where we start to really dial in and validate and further detail the intent of the project. And then we will likely have another kind of pause where we wait for the environmental permits to come through. Whenever those are submitted, they take a minimum of 20 weeks to be reviewed. So it would be four to five months before we would even hear back from these agencies, and then most likely, there would be comments and things required by them that we would need to resubmit. The three permits I'm speaking of are the shoreline substantial development permit, the site plan review, and environmental review. And those three permits are reviewed simultaneously by the city of Renton, and then they farm certain pieces out to other agencies. So it's really into construction documents before we can start putting together a building permit and making sure that all of those environmental pieces have been approved. And then because we don't know how long those will take, you know, if we have oversight by certain agencies, it takes longer than that, which is definitely a very real possibility, it's likely that there would be another hold before bidding and construction starts, especially because some of the work in these alluvial soils can only take place in the dry season. The abutment construction really can only take place between May and October. So most likely, there, you know, if we finished with the documents in, you know, January, there may be a bit of a pause before you can really get a crew out there to embark on that site work. So that's, all of, the last two phases are really conjecture at this point in terms of the timelines that we could suggest. So let's talk design for a second. We have a great piece of given infrastructure. It's a wonderful, flexible, open grid, and what you're seeing here is a diagram of the floor plate. So this is exactly how it is today. We have a nice big rectangle, we have a fixed column grid, we're keeping all of the columns that are in place today. So what you're seeing here, column grid at the floor plate that exists, and then you see the two rectangles, one to the top and one to the side. Those two pieces were additions to the original structure. One was a balcony that was enclosed in the 80s, and the other one on the right-hand side was an addition that was added onto the building in the 80s as well. And what we know right now is that if, in order to do the abutment construction, the abutment construction will be installed on the shoreline of both sides of the bridge structure. So the addition that was added in the 80s on the right-hand side of the screen will have to be removed because the abutment construction needs to tie into the main structural frame of the building, and it can't go through this addition, which is of a different structural system, and it, I don't want to say this, we need to tie directly in. So that piece of addition needs to be removed in order to brace the structure. The deck that was enclosed that's on the top of the page, I'll explain in just a second why that piece becomes difficult and impossible to access with the addition of some braced frames. So the original design that we proposed and brought in on budget during the schematic design phase was at 14,500 square feet, and that showed the removal of the two pieces that I just talked about that were necessary for structural reasons, and it also talked about a region to, toward the bridge that we also proposed removing. And the reason, the reason behind that was, we wanted to bring you a project that was on budget, and that meant a certain amount of square footage. And while at the outset, we were very excited about having an outdoor patio to the south, when we got into it, what we realized was that it wasn't a free move. I think I definitely optimistically went in thinking, oh, this'll be great. But when we dug into it, what we realized was that the current slab is designed, it's flat, it's graded flat for an indoor space, and when you have concrete outside, it needs to have a slope to it so that we don't have ponding, which can lead to cracking, ice, people falling, but also, we want to shed that water. And so what we realized was that in order to put a slope on it, we would have to peel the rigid insulation and the concrete off, put concrete back that had a slope, and that did two things. We only had a few, we only had about an inch of depth that we could create slope with, and that wouldn't really be enough to drain water. The other issue was, we weren't convinced that the, without further testing, that the columns below could handle the additional weight, because instead of being rigid and then concrete, it would have to be all concrete. Because up, any kind of concrete slab, you need a certain depth just so that it doesn't start cracking when we see normal movement of a structure. The other thing that our structural engineers brought to our attention was that the concrete structure on the outside, if it is an outdoor space that is a balcony or a deck, it is required to have the same structural capacity as the space inside, and that's very clearly listed in the code. It's a chart, it's not really open to interpretation. And so we said, well, we'd be building a deck and we'd have to fence it off and not let people in it. And so that was another issue that started to be a red flag to us. So we looked at three options, leaving that section of slab intact and making the required upgrades to make it be a patio. We looked at enclosing it, and then we also looked at removing it. And by far, the cheapest option was to remove that segment of that slab. I'm going to come back in a few minutes and talk about why we may not want to do that, but just so you understand why we showed what we did in the submittal and kind of the background on it. So the other piece of the structural upgrade that we need, we talked about the abutment pieces that are below grade, and they start bracing the concrete structure, the columns that are in the river, the concrete slab, the concrete columns that go up to the roof. However, the roof structure is also not up to current seismic code, and so what we're talking about are the glue lamps that run across the columns, and then also all of the truss joists that run the other way, and they just need to be braced appropriately. So we will need to insert steel braced frames. You can see here, they're denoted by the dotted lines, and we really don't have much choice about those. We can talk about how small or big they are, but they need to run in that direction centered on the grid lines. So that started to be another given. We've got, we've got the column structure, which starts to drive certain things, we've got the braced frames that need to live within that grid. The other kind of observation we made at the site is that all of the utilities currently come into this corner of the building. So when we start thinking about how utilities are routed underground, they're at a certain slope to make it to a building connection at a certain point, and if you start relocating those, sometimes you can't meet the elevation of the connection at the street. And so we said, you know what, we got to try to keep as many of these in place with the current penetrations in the slab as possible. So it started to suggest that this corner of the building really kept a lot of the same uses that it has now. Let's keep the electrical room in the same corner of the building, let's keep the mechanical room in the same corner of the building. All of that's working well, so let's try to keep it in that location and save funds that could be allocated to other pieces of the project. The other piece that we started looking at was that we wanted to ensure that we had a safe entry that was visible from the parking lot, that was visible for children to wait for rides, and also provided the most accessible route for patrons with disabilities. And so putting an entry here on that corner of the building started to make some sense in terms of improving access to the facility you have, and we're going to talk about that as well. So in terms of just a diagram of what we submitted, you can see it starts to look a little bit like this. We have support spaces on the left in the large orange oval, you have the entry space just below it, and what that started to set up was a workroom and an entry that allowed the book delivery and return to be really well-functioning for the library. But then we're really left with this wonderful, open, flexible rectangle to the right, and I say wonderful because it's flexible in a way that really, the program pieces of the library could be arranged in any number of ways without a lot of obstruction. When we went to the public meeting, we took two versions of the interior to folks. The program, like I said, could be laid out a number of different ways, and we wanted to hear their feedback on where they pictured the children's area, where they pictured the computers, what they wanted, you know, where they wanted to be able to sit, and we got great feedback on both schemes. One of the schemes showed the children's collection to the north, soft seating to the south, so you could sit along those windows in the sun and look out to the river, watch the trains go by with the big... the trains go by with the big Boeing parts on them, and really start to use that center 80-foot span for more of the lower shelving and program elements. That did two things. It maintained views throughout the building, which I think is really key. We want to make views to this river as significant and as pervasive as possible. So keeping lower things in the center was key. The other issue is that the center span of the building does not have the strong enough structural capacity to be code compliant if we do kind of the rigorous tall stacks. So currently, we've shown kind of those tall, nonfiction stacks, you know, taller than my head, three or four feet apart, over on the right-hand side in the dark blue. And what that does is twofold. It gets it to where we have the slab capacity, but in addition, it keeps it from being a view blocker in that nice central part of your building. We talked a little bit about where would be the best spot for a meeting space. That's kind of on that lower right-hand corner. You know, pros and cons, I think, the notion is that we'd have a glass enclosure and be able to open up to the library when it's not used. So, do you want to see it from the front door, or should it be located somewhere else? So, this showed kind of a flip-flop of that previous scheme where the children's collection was the first thing you saw. And the soft seating and the teens are up on that northern portion of the building. And I actually had a great conversation with a couple of parents who came to my station at the public meeting, and they said, "We love the children's collection, it's got to be on the south." And I said, "Well, why? You know, what's different between the north and the south?" And she said, "We come every day because at a certain time, the trains go by with the big Boeing parts, and we stand right here, plastered up against the glass, watching the Boeing parts go by on the train." And I said, "Oh, I'm so glad you talked to me about that." So there was really a big difference in terms of where things get situated. And I think, hearing more about the why people see certain things in certain spots is really key. And so, we'll continue to seek out that feedback. So, we had a, we've been having the ongoing public meetings, you know, since the fall about the library projects. But then, we had a public meeting at the library at the end of March where we had a great turnout. It was lively in terms of discussion, and very passionate. And I think, for us, it's great to see a community that is so passionate. The reason we get riled up is because we care about something and we have an opinion. So I think we were very glad to hear and gather the opinions we heard a couple of weeks ago. So, what we did hear very clearly from the public was that this building needed to stay as big as possible. And so, this floor plan that you're seeing right here shows the building at the biggest that we could make it, which is 19,500. The reason that it's not quite at the 21.5 that it currently is is because of the two pieces I talked about that we need to nip off for structural reasons. The piece to the right because the abutments need to join up with the main concrete structure. And then, that piece to the top, which, if you remember where the braced frames go, they need to go along the column line, and it makes it next to impossible to actually access that little nub of space that would fall outside the braced frames. So at 19.5, this would represent an expansion of what we submitted for schematic design, and I think speaks to the very vocal comments we heard from the public to keep a larger building square footage. And you can see, we would still have, you know, the same amount of flexibility. We could lay things out very similarly to the ideas that we showed at the public meeting. This is just a first pass at how things might lay out. So, just to show that some of the intent that we had during schematic design, you know, isn't necessarily lost effort. Lastly, I think the other really significant issue we heard about was the entry location. And there were, you know, there were definitely a lot of comments about keeping the entry exactly where it is, and really talking to people about why, I think, was wonderful to hear. The reasons why, that we heard, were that coming to the building, seeing the river, and then going in was a sequence they really enjoyed. So entering the building off the river held a special place to them. And I think hearing the why is very important. We also heard from a number of people that they really appreciated having the door closer to parking. So if it was icy, a lot of times that bridge ices up, that's harder for a lot of patrons to negotiate. Sometimes, there's activity in the parking lot or the library that feels uncomfortable to people. And so, being able to see the door from their car felt good, and being able to see their car from the lobby felt good. And I had a number of parents come up and say that, "Gosh, if I knew my, you know, child or whatever could wait in a vestibule until they saw me pull up, that makes me feel better." So, the entry was definitely a piece of very passionate discussion, and I think we're trying to just recap kind of the variety of opinions we heard. So, to respond to that, we started really examining what we're dealing with at the entry. And right now, there is, there's kind of this wedge where you look down to the riprap and the shotcrete that makes up the slope of the river. And because there's a significant drop in grade there, it needs to be fenced off. And it's also not an area that's super attractive. The other piece is, it's starting to allow access under the building to people who camp out. So it's a nice attempt to try to see something scenic below, but if you really look at it, there's definitely some safety and aesthetic issues with that little wedge area. So, we took that, and we said, "Well, what if there was a way to actually fill that in?" So that became part of our entry piece. And what that started to do was kind of knit together the entry hardscape area that you're seeing toward the left. Your parking lot is on the left. So imagine approaching from the parking lot, and if we were able to actually join the bridge experience and the entry experience on that side of the building. And what we also did was move the entry a little bit more toward the middle. So it's still facing the parking lot and visible from the parking lot. Oh, man. Thanks, Jay. It's too bad I'm almost done. Save me from myself next time. So what you can see here, this red dashed line is the area that is currently that wedge open to the riprap and shotcrete down below. I want to interject, it's also not an area we can necessarily plant and do too much to because it is shoreline habitat. And the minute we start changing the nature of that, it opens us up to additional oversight because we're starting to get into those daddoms again. So, one idea we had was that if we could actually bridge this area with a surface that was walkable, it started to actually make a large plaza area that joined together the parking lot, the entry, and the bridge, to where we could imagine starting to have this be an area that's really an area you can step out and enjoy. There could be seating or what have you. But then, the door actually is participating in that a little bit more than it was before, and it's a bit of a compromise with all of the opinions we heard, which was, being part of this area here, which is out over the water, was very important, but also having a door that was visible from the parking lot. So this is a revised picture of what that could look like with a little bit more gracious of a plaza area that is also part of the bridge. So the bridge and that entry area all start to kind of work together, rather than having bridge and building separate but next to each other. So, we are not naive by any means. We know that these are two really significant issues for the community to weigh in on and the council to weigh in on. We talked a little bit about the building size being something that people really passionately spoke about. We also talked about the entry location being something people spoke very passionately about. And so, we felt really strongly that we needed to bring those to you today and have you weigh in. Before I go to the last slide, this is a rendering that we did of the, what the building would appear as from the Bronson Way Bridge. And I think this starts to really show our response to the people who said, "I want a lot of natural daylight. I want, you know, I want a lot of daylight and sun in this building." Bringing it up to current codes, you're seeing what that would look like with an improved envelope and the braced frames. And starting to think about this is a real showcase in your community that people can't wait to go to, and you can see from 405 everything that's going on. You can see from Bronson Way when you walk by. And I think, what we need to remember is that this building is beloved by a number of generations. We hope it can be beloved by a number of more generations. But in order to occupy it as a library, we can't, we cannot remodel it and have it continue to look exactly the same because of the significance and nature of the required improvements. So, this drawing starts to show what it could look like when we make those required improvements. So, if we start to think about the larger building that the community has definitely spoken up about, it would require an increased construction cost. And our team went through an abbreviated pricing exercise just so that we could put that information in front of you today. So like I said, what we submitted for schematic design was within the project budget that you gave us. And we felt like that was a responsible thing to do, to be stewards of taxpayer funding, to come in on budget. But, the trade-off to that is that it's a smaller building than a lot of people hoped. And so, if we, if the council does want to step up and keep the building size at that maximum, the 19.5, it would require an increased construction cost. So, I think, you know, what we are looking for from council is a decision on the project budget and building size, so it's kind of go hand in hand. And then, what we would like approval for is to move into design development with the changes that we've talked about, the entry, the entry design and reconfiguration of that little piece of the bridge there, keeping the bridge but modifying that first section of it. And any of these pieces, the increased building size and the revised entry, would be what we would tackle in this next phase of design. So, with that, I will stop talking and open up.
Okay. Well, thank you for the very thorough presentation. It was very interesting. I guess I'd like to just open up to council for comments.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Ruth, thank you very much. It was a great presentation. I think you did a good job capturing what we've been through to get to where we're at. Yeah, I think you made a couple of statements in there very much. The original budget that we gave you was the original budget that we gave you. And you guys worked with what KCLS needed and staying in at that budget. I think, I think the process is that there's no decisions tonight, right? This is more discussion, and then we're, wait in a couple of weeks, we'll be back on it. But, I can just say, I'm very, very excited by the design and the possibilities. I think you've really heard a lot of the concerns that I've heard. I do want to take the next couple of weeks to go over the information that has been supplied to make sure that we've captured everything, but I think you've captured the big ones for me and that I've been hearing. And again, I will just go ahead and start with why letting council know where I'm going to head is I think that we're, I have no problem going with the larger size. I think that, to me, is personally, as one council member, an absolute no-brainer. The design is just better. It looks better, it addresses concerns, it gets us a better library. As I mentioned last week, Councilmember Parker, Breyer, and myself were on today larger library at the Big Five site, so I don't have any problem going out on the record that I'm definitely in favor of the larger size and will advocate for that in two weeks. Again, my thanks on a great presentation, very exciting design, and I look forward to being able to look at it a little closer with the audience, or the citizen commentary that we've received over the process. But, I think it's worked very well. I compliment KCLS and you, Ruth, and your firm, and especially city staff. This is what I envisioned with Guiding Principles when we did that back in September, and I appreciate the audience comments and the audience participation in the process, and I think that you guys have captured it well from my perspective.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Zwicker. Other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Well, you're almost there. Excellent presentation, and I really appreciate it going through the building, showing some of the problems with it. And as you're showing that gas shut off, that kind of scared me because if it needed to turn that gas off during the flood, I don't think we, nobody would ever get under there. And then, also showing how the panels are is meant a lot to me. I've always been for the, keeping the whole bridge structure, as I stated before. And I just have to comment also on the excellent presentation on why we have to upgrade. I mean, the city, the city has a responsibility to be a leader. When we pass codes, and when we pass these codes and say, "You're a private developer, you have to meet those codes," well, we have even a higher obligation to meet those codes when we do something. So, we can't, in my opinion, say, "Well, we'll do just a little bit here and a little bit there so we can beat the codes." We don't allow a general contractor to do that. So we have to be very cognizant of that, that we have to do that. And we would be remiss if we didn't do it. We would be remiss if we didn't do the seismic upgrades. Not one of us wants to be in that building. And worse than that, I wouldn't want my granddaughter to be in that building in an earthquake. Because I, you know, now that I know the stuff, I mean, you guys have done the soils test, and you've had all the experts in. So, I really appreciate it, the more the constructual aspect of what you did. I like the design, and I like to, I do have one problem, and it's kind of a physical responsibility. I just hate to, and this will come back at us later on, of coming up with more money. You know, everybody knows me well enough that I like to stay with the original budgets. But sometimes, I think you have to look at what's best for all of our citizens, and I'm, hopefully, we'll have a good suggestion on that. But, I want to thank you that I can support this design. I think it takes in everything, and I like that little wedge. You know, you walk by that wedge, and you look down, and you say how ugly that is, and you see people throwing junk down there. And, duh, to fill it in and make that all part of it is, would be, is great. Thank you.
Mr. President. Oh, may I make a brief, I appreciated you mentioning the code piece. It's not necessarily glamorous or a fun piece of the, what we have to do here, but I think the other piece is, as professionals licensed by the State of Washington, we legally actually are not allowed to submit things or document things to be built that aren't in compliance with current code. So, we also, like you as a municipality, we also do not have that flexibility.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Prince.
Again, thank you so much. That was a great presentation. As one of the two council members that was actually at the public forum on the 26th, I'm really happy that you took as much of the citizen input that you could and put it into the updated design. And I am really, 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 really looking forward to the conversation we're going to have as council in two weeks on what we want to do moving forward. But thank you so much. I say this to people all the time, public process can be messy, public process can be strenuous, but we always seem to, once we come out on the other end of it, come out with something that everyone really likes. And while, we, I would really be happy when we talk about this and make a decision so that we can move forward. But thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Could I ask the architect a couple of questions? Would that be all right?
Certainly.
Ruth, if you wouldn't mind, there's been some question about the brace frame design and why that option. Would you speak a little bit to other options you might have considered to stabilize? I think the council certainly understands, and I know the administration understands, that we do have a critical responsibility to make that building seismically sound. So we've got the middle section that we need to basically strengthen the bridge. And my understanding, and I'm not an engineer, is you go up, you can either go above the deck or below the deck, and there may be some other options. But could you just talk a little bit about what options you considered and why you settled on the brace frame design above the deck? And then, the other question is, with that decision, is it possible to locate the door in the middle of the bridge, close to its current location? Or does the brace frame design prohibit that ability to do that?
Got it. The brace frame design, just to be clear, it is only bracing the roof framing, so it isn't necessarily- So it, it isn't necessarily playing a role in how the concrete structure behaves. It's really about how the roof structure is behaving. And so we can't really put something below the slab in order to address that. What we're trying to do is brace how that roof structure moves and how it is, basically how it is attached to the concrete column, so that they're working together. You basically have this big wood and metal pancake up here, and we want to make sure that it is attached to the concrete structure in a way that it moves the way we want it to during, during an earthquake event. So we don't, we don't have necessarily a lot of flexibility about how that's done. The brace frames are really kind of the way we need to do it. There's actually brace frames going in the other direction as well. They're just, we're locating them within walls because we have that ability. And so, you know, we haven't really talked about those, but there's others going in in that direction. I think when we start talking about brace frames, there's a couple of rules of thumb. They need to be centered on the structural grid line. We can't have them outside or inside. Because of what the work they're doing, they need to be in alignment with the structural grid. And also they need to, they're, they're kind of a byproduct of geometry. They, they like to be symmetrical so that they disperse their, their work equally. So what that means is that they need to touch the ground in the center. And then it's, we don't really get to decide what that angle is. It's just, it needs to go up to where the two columns and the roof meet. So it's a, it's a geometric exercise that we don't really get a say in. It's like, okay, we take the middle dot, join it to the, you know, the two end of the columns. So in that respect, we, we, we don't have the amount of flexibility that you might think in terms of achieving a head height or an entry place that would be accessible and able to put a vestibule on.
Good. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Ms. Palmer?
I just want to be clear, you're leaving the bridge as is.
Absolutely. We would just be filling the, obviously, this is just a proposal idea to fill in that little wedge. But yes, absolutely, the bridge would stay exactly as it is. We're not proposing to remove any sections of it. I think one thing we might investigate doing is there are certain sections of the railing, if we go back up, that are actually solid concrete. And it, it might be interesting to investigate changing those all out to a more transparent metal system so that you, when you are in the building, you can truly see as much of the river as possible. But other than that, I think leaving the bridge in its full configuration, we would definitely concur with.
I, I'm just dying to get my early request in that, there's a 1% for art, right? For this building, is there? Yeah, I'd love to see something done with that railing to make it really special, you know, to reflect the salmon or some other decorative railing on there.
We would have, money for the art would come out of the project budget, but we try as much as possible to set aside some money to be able to accomplish that.
Good. Good. Other questions or comments? Greg?
I'm just still all ears. I'll hold my comments for right now.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I really appreciate the responsiveness to the citizen comments. I mean, I, it's not, it's not quite as large of a library as we have now, but I think it's, it's a lot closer. And, and I really like that the center section of the, the bridge, all the spanning is, is kept the same. In fact, it's even slightly increased in this design. I do get the, the abutments. In fact, I, I have some engineering questions. In fact, I'll go ahead, and we have a couple of minutes. I'm curious with those, of course, now he talks to the architect, right? When I'm trying to ask my question. So with those big abutments that we're putting in on both ends and is causing a loss of the, the building footprint on the one end, how do those tie back to the, the concrete structure? Are they, are they just, is it just by proximity, they're just wedging it? Or are they actually physically tied with steel?
Oh, sure.
How does that work?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question, actually. And I have learned more about these than I ever realized I would. And, and the answer is yes. On one side, okay, on one side of the building, we have a rigid connection. So we are drilling and epoxying and have an actual rebar connection between the abutment and the foundation wall of the building. But we don't want to do that on both sides. And if I were an engineer, I could explain to you why. But what I, but what I know is, on the other side, it's just a, a friction or a slip connection. So it's there providing rigidity, but we do not have an actual reinforced connection. Micah, am I right? Okay. Because I remember we kind of went back and forth on that. But, but yes, one side will be, but they are below grade. So once they go in, you know, they, you won't see them there. And the great thing about auger cast piles is we don't necessarily have to do as much excavation. And so we won't be disturbing as much of the soil, so we can do a lot of it from the surface.
Good. And, um, you know, the other thing I, I can anticipate, there's going to be a lot of dialogue about the, the entrance. And I, I appreciate the, the plaza idea. So, I mean, I, I recognize that as a compromise, and I'm, I'm grateful to you for putting that forward where the entrance is, in effect, a little bit on the bridge, if not in, in the middle of the bridge. Which, which I think is good in as much as it's, it's going to be a lot more agreeable with people parking over by, like, the tennis courts. I think this is going to feel a lot more natural. But...
I think that's a perfect time, Council President, if I could. This, we will also be working to look at the landscaping on both sides of the building. And the work, you know, we're planning for a new playground area there in the park. People do have trouble a little bit finding the connection to that trail there. So with this going on, we have the ability to look at some planning there within the park itself, changing the landscaping, making that flow better on both sides. And that's not really demonstrated here tonight because we'll be working on that together. But I think from a community services standpoint, we can make that a much more open area and invite it to the park side and also from, coming from Liberty Park. It's doing a lot of the...
Yeah. And thank you. That, that actually addresses, yeah, kind of the, the question that I had was, I was wondering with, with an entrance in that corner, whether it could take in vistas of the river, you know, I think probably with some pruning and some re-landscaping or something.
Yeah, we have some opportunity to really open that up, and I think it will be much more inviting and look out into the whole park also on that side.
Mr. Furman?
Yeah. Also, since you're talking about that entrance is, I've had numerous comments lately, can't understand why, on the library. But especially with the new design, of people coming with young kids that don't like to go into that library, won't go into the library, and one of them happened to be my daughter and granddaughter, they were scared to go in at night because they had a walk and it's darker over the river because we can't put the downward lights. They, we're happy to hear that the, the entrance would change where they could come from a lighted area and see what's going on. And obviously, we have a lot of hanger-ons in, in the park that scare people. And I, I bet you I've had 25 or 30 comments about that as a safety, that we should consider the safety of the patrons as they go in.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Although I'm anxious to hear our community members weigh in on this, I do want to acknowledge KCLS for taking the comments and input into account and coming back to us with a different, a different, a different, a different plan. And one that does take into consideration some of the concerns to, to an extent of what, what the community has been saying. That, that's, it's good. I just want to make sure that I understand, though, that, and Jay's question that he asked regarding the door, I, I understand that you, you, you say that it is difficult to put, based on the how the construction has to occur and the interfacing with the roof and what so, those things. Does that mean that it is just not feasible at all? Is a, I mean, is there, is feasibility of putting a door on the river side just undoable? And if it's not, would it be possible to see a rendition that could reflect that, including, you know, a fiscal, you know, note attached to it as well? Is another option.
Is that a question?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think if, if this first idea of the, the improved kind of joining of the bridge and the entry doesn't meet with satisfaction, then I think that would be a conversation we could have about what, what do we need to achieve with an entry over the river? And what impacts does that have for not only accessibility but functionality inside the building? I think our first look at it was that that was not an ideal spot for an entry mainly because of how the brace frame construction goes together. And they really are a function of geometry. And if we want to skew it like one way or another to get a head height to work, we, we actually don't have that flexibility because it changes how the forces distribute themselves. So I, I think our recommendation at this point is that this is the most cost-effective and straightforward place to put the entry. And that's why we've put it forward as, as our response today.
Okay. So then if I understand what you're saying, you're not saying that it's not doable. You're just saying that the proposal that you're making is more cost-effective, more cost-efficient. That it could be done, but it could be done at a greater extent or greater complexity?
I think the other...
Holding it down.
No.
Am I working now?
Yeah, you don't want to hold it.
All right. The concern really is the operation of the library. I mean, you know, we, what, you, where the staff is located, where the workrooms are, and where people come into the building, you know, that relationship is really important to the functioning of the library. And so if, if, if we were going to consider, you know, having the entry be someplace else, then we've got to make a lot of changes in the inside of the building. So the cost is going to be considerable. Because, you know, again, it may even be to the point of where the utilities come into the building, you know, all those other things that, that we've talked about in your presentation. And then again, you know, with the aesthetic and the kind of practical issue of those crossbeams and where you put an entry in the middle of a crossbeam, you know, it's really, really difficult. And, and again, part of the public process, which I think really did work the way, you know, we would envision it to, we put something out there, we got people to talk about it. We talked about not only what they liked and they didn't like, but as Ruth said many times, why? What are the issues behind? What are the reasons? What's, you know, trying to understand, why do you want the entrance here or there or whatever? And again, the issue seems, that the why seemed to be so much that they wanted to have, you know, that experience of, of the river. And, and we think that we've kind of come up with a way that we can solve the operational issues, we can put the crossbeams in there without interfering, having a doorway interfere with it, and have that experience of the entry and the river working together at the same time. So we kind of think that we've got an answer to all of that. And to go in a different direction, is it impossible? Probably not. But, you know, again, anything can be solved with money and more effort and more time. But I, I don't know if that's really the way we want to go.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that topic, and I, Mr. Patel, I appreciate your response on that and, and the answer to it. I think that's a topic for us on the 29th as a council. Is if there's four of us that decide that that's a priority to us, then we can move forward in exploring the options on that. I don't think it necessarily needs to be. I, I get your, the reasoning behind it. And, and again, that was the point of the presentation up till now. You guys have presented up till now. And then I think that's for, my opinion would be, that would be something we would discuss on the 29th if we wanted to.
Mr., Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
And I would agree with that, but, you know, since there is, it is an issue, and it is obviously something that it is one of the two items that was of importance to our community, I think that it's important to be discussed right now in the sense of making sure that the people in our community, we're going to eventually want to make sure that they, they buy off on it and that they understand it. And I hear your reasoning for it. And I know that you've had a presentation at the last meeting that you held. But I just want to be clear that they understand how you are arriving at the, the point where you are right now, that because at one point, we were talking about the convenience parking lot and those type of things. I'm hearing some things, and maybe I've heard them before but just didn't pay attention to them. But you're talking about the entire site, a floor plan rearrangement being hinged upon where that entrance is. So, you know, having this conversation right now to me is, is, you know, just providing more information for our community. I think that the end of the day, what we really want is we want our, our community members to understand why you're doing what you, why you're proposing what you're proposing, how did you get there? And, and is, are those options that you're proposing the best options based on all of the elements that you've got to work with? And so for those reasons, I think that that's important, that we have this discussion. And I, I wouldn't want us to, to not have this conversation right now and then come up on a, a, a meeting where we are going to take action and we haven't properly vetted this, this question. And I think that's the purpose of this meeting right now.
All right. I have a, I, I have a quick question, too, to make sure, just consistent with the idea of getting everything out there for the public as much as possible. Can you talk quickly about that balcony section? I found it interesting when, you're the second person I heard mention that that used to be a balcony and that it got enclosed. And I, I think I wasn't living here when that happened.
Yeah.
But, and, and at this point, it sounds like part of the design, so I have to correct what I said earlier. I guess that would be one part of the, over the, over the river part that comes off? Is that what you're saying?
It, because it's in that, that same center 80-foot span, it's kind of the same issue with the front door. Once those brace frames go in, it's difficult to provide access on both sides of that structural line. And so it's not a large square footage area. And so in our mind, that can easily be achieved through a more efficient organization of the rest of the building. But it, it becomes very difficult, if not impossible, to provide access to that, that area, which now is on the other side of the brace frames, much like the same issue at the front door essentially.
Mr. Corbin?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I understand. Go ahead.
If I could just make one more comment about the entry, I know you didn't want to get into a long discussion, but I think it's really important to understand, you know, the other thing, if you put in, that is really prime, in the center of that building, that's prime real estate in the, inside the library. That's a place where people can go and enjoy and whatnot. You put an entry in there, remember what happens in the entry. You've got to have a vestibule. So you've got a lot of space that's going to be taken up. You're taking up some of your prime real estate, you know, putting a vestibule, and then all the other things that happen in the entry. And you can't really put chairs near there or anything else. So people aren't going to be able to enjoy and utilize that space in the library. And I think in addition to the very, very important operational concerns we have, by having it in that other location, you don't really use up any space that you could have been using otherwise for seating or for, you know, activities or other kinds of library or the enjoyment of the building. So I think that it's an important, I think it needs to be, and as you think about this, it's another important issue to be aware of.
Right. Well, that, yeah, I understand. And in fact, I, on the side with, where the balcony is removed or what's currently enclosed, I mean, I do, I do understand, I think there's, there's value in, you know, I, I think the glass, the, the glass walls being right where the, the brace frame truss is, and so you're going to have some wonderful, wonderful seating, I presume, along that side. And that kind of gets goofy if, if we try and leave an extra four feet or six feet of concrete sticking out of it.
And, and not to get, not to get too into the weeds, but the way that the, the envelope needs to work is the, like I said, the, the brace frames need to be aligned with the concrete column system. Now, once you do that, if you actually go out there and look, there's, there isn't enough slab beyond the columns to run the glass on the outside of that.
Right.
So that immediately says, oh, glass has to be inside the columns. So once you put glass on the inside of the columns, if you can imagine, how do you get the glass under and through the brace frame and out onto that balcony and then back through without cookie cuttering envelope around the brace frames?
Yeah.
And it becomes the same issue at the front door. So it sounds really simple until you try to draw it.
Right.
And then you're like, oh, this is actually technically a much more, it appears simple on paper until you try to configure it. So I think that's, those are the, the types of technical issues that, that make, and the envelope actually needs to be co-located with the structural grid because that's how it's being tied off at the top and, and receiving its support. So we don't have as much flexibility for where that goes as you might think. And, and frankly, what I thought at the beginning, I thought, oh, you can put that glass wall anywhere. But that really wasn't the case once we investigated it.
It makes sense. Okay. So we've got a few more minutes. Any other questions? Oh, let me just talk about process, then. I think we're, we're not going to get together as a council. First of all, I should say, so I, I saw a raised hand, and everybody will actually get a chance to speak. to speak at the audience comment section of the council meeting in 20 minutes, if you'd like. I think typically, we don't take testimony during committee of the hall, in part, we don't have the people to properly record the testimony available. But I do want to invite people that have comments, and then, we're going to not have a council meeting next week, but the week after, I think, will be an important one to talk about where we go from here.
Right, I think the, I think staff's anticipating that we would just have this under unfinished business, and regular council meeting will allow you as a council to begin the debate and deliberation, and you can make up whatever decisions you want to make. And we'll try to provide any other information that comes along. I think, I haven't heard a lot of questions tonight, so I think to the extent that there are additional information, one would be some options that we can provide you about how we would come up with the million five that we'd need. So, we'll try to provide some options for you to consider.
Okay.
And Jay, you are going to supply us, though, with all of the audience, or the citizen commentary up till now in a digestible manner?
Correct, staff, we took, we had a lot of comments, and so, what we actually tried to do was categorize those. So, we didn't list every single comment, but we tried to put them in categories. I think, I think council is pretty familiar with what those are, and Ruth reiterated the main ones, it's really been about the size of the library, position of the door, a lot of discussion about not wanting to see the library's physical appearance changed at all, and the relationship with Liberty Park and that. So, we'll provide that information, so you'll have that to look at as you think about your discussion for the 29th.
In advance of the 29th.
Yes. Mr. Petas?
Jay's going, I keep bringing this up, but, you know, shortly after next month, we're going to be coming back to you about the Renton Highlands Library, which we really think is very important as well, probably going to need some additional attention. So, I just hope that whatever you're able to do, you know, on this library, that it doesn't take away from our ability to accomplish the Renton Highlands Library, and we're really on that one as well. So, we'll have another presentation on that, but we, just, again, I just ask that whatever you do here, don't take it away from your ability to make sure we can deal with the Renton Highlands.
Again, I appreciate your being committed to that, as are we, so thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I just, if I could, so Jay, you will be bringing us options that do not take from the Highlands. I don't know if you're going to bring us options that do take from the Highlands, if you do, but I want to see options that don't take from the Highlands presented.
Okay, we'll provide those options.
And, oh, you know, one other thing that you kind of hinted at, but you didn't cover explicitly was, so, I'm curious, does the roof deck basically stay the same and/or what happens to that cold attic?
Oh, sure. That's a great question. I was worried I was loading too much technical information on you, but we are keeping the entire, the roof deck. So, what that means is the glue lamps that sit on top of the concrete columns, the truss joists that are every four feet on top of that, that stays. What we do in terms of the cold attic is, we take out the ceiling tiles that you see below, keep the ductwork running within the joist bays like you saw in that photograph. But what we do is, we use the existing roof membrane that's on the roof right now as our vapor barrier, use, put the required amount of roof insulation to bring us up to energy coat on top of that, and then re-roof with a new membrane on top of that. So, we're keeping all the same structure, it's just we're kind of reordering the sandwich. And so, what that does is, by using your existing roof membrane as your new vapor barrier, putting insulation and roof on top of that, is it puts your old cold attic now into the conditioned piece of the building. So, we're still keeping all of the roof framing in place, but it is just kind of reordering those layers.
And is there still a false ceiling?
No.
Is that gone?
Yes. What the current design to meet budget, what we assumed was that we would take out the ACT ceiling. We would spray out, in terms of paint, the plywood deck that you see and the truss joists, but we did not have budget to bring in some kind of additional, you know...
It'll have a higher ceiling, basically.
Yes, so that, yeah, I think the piece we were really excited about was that we could start to have a thinner roof line at the edge and start to make the building look a little lighter and crisper, but we also get the perception of a taller space inside, which I think will really make the building feel a little bit bigger to people without, you know, changing the framing.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
So, Ruth, is it, because it's not, it's definitely not in the drawing that we have up. So, the silhouette of the building remains the same?
Correct, correct. The piece that we, the only, the piece that you are seeing that looks different is that we have taken what is about an eight-foot chunk at the edge, you know, that piece that makes the overhang, that is extremely deep, and what we've been able to do is, we essentially nip the existing truss joists where the windows are and bring out a new thinner member to just do the overhang, so that your windows can come up higher and you just have a little of much thinner piece that isn't eight feet tall, making your overhang profile.
But from the river perspective, the silhouette of the building is going to remain the same?
Correct.
Wow, that's amazing. That's great. Yeah, we should have a drawing that shows that. Thanks, Ruth.
Any other comments from council? Questions?
No, I'm just sad that, thank you again for pivoting in a different way, and I know this has been tough for you. I think that we're, it's been tough for all of us, and it looks as if we're heading down, we're on the track. So, I'm interested in hearing some more comments from folks and confident that we'll figure out a way to bring this to a close soon.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, committee of the hall is adjourned. We'll get together in about 14 minutes for city council.